I'm going to call the meeting to order. I will be substituting for the mayor. Clerk, please read the roll.
A special session has been held on Thursday, January 23rd, 2014 at 5:00 PM in the commission chambers for a report regarding the Commission Neighborhood Infrastructure Program. Immediately following will be an executive session in the fifth floor conference room regarding property acquisition. Roll call. Townsend?
Here.
McKernan?
Here.
Murgia?
Here.
Maddox?
Here.
Kane?
Markley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Philbrook?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
All right. This will be a presentation of the program and it is ongoing. I'm going to turn it over to Doug Bach. Initially, I would say that we should try not to go into any great detail about any of the projects that the commissioner or commissioners want to meet on. A particular project with Public Works in engineering about the status or what might be the particulars outside the general, we'd ask that you do that by setting an appointment. Having been previewed this, we could spend hours on this project going into detail about each of these 22 to 25 projects. With that, Mr. Bach?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As the commissioner recall, in 2010, we passed the sales tax initiative in our community, which had an emphasis as one part of it to include neighborhood infrastructure. In 2012, the governing body took the action to put forth some special emphasis on neighborhood projects, which each of you were given the opportunity to look at. Projects that you thought within your community areas or districts could make a real impact, and that's where the basis of the CNET program came. So with that, I'm going to call on Bob Roddy, our Director of Public Works, to come forward tonight, and his team is going to present a little bit of the history of where, how we developed the program, and then step through the different projects that have been done, and then we'll do a little bit of look forward.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, commissioners, tonight it is our pleasure to give you an update on the CNET program. We wanted to start with a little historical review, just to put it all in context. As Doug Bach was saying earlier, that the commission first approved the CNET program in July of 2012. It authorized spending $4.4 million in the different commission districts and at the at-large districts. The money was funded from the sales tax initiative that was passed earlier. The spending would occur in two stages, in 2013 and 2015, with the planning years being in 2012 and 2014. The reason why the sales tax is worth mentioning is that it did put constrictions on us as to how we spend the money. If you recall that when the sales tax initiative was passed in 2010, the projects were aimed at neighborhood infrastructure, including construction, repair, maintenance of roads, curbs, and sidewalks. That was the specific words that were in the enabling of legislation, so that's, we tried to get all of our projects to fit within those confines. As we went through the eligibility review, we did expand it slightly to include other concrete-like projects where you're actually doing an investment in the community, and those are listed on the slide in front of you, primarily parks, recreation, drainage areas, and some historical improvements were envisioned. These are just a shotgun blast of all the areas that we've touched, or will touch with our CNET projects for 2013. And this is, I obviously don't expect any of you to be able to read this from this presentation on the board, but we did hand this out in paper to all the commissioners, and this document basically gives you a scorecard of where the projects are, whether or not they're completed, or when they will be completed, as far as Phase 1. There are a lot of details on each one. I would compliment the engineering staff for basically undertaking this project. We basically absorbed another 24 to 40 projects, and by and large, I think we've been pretty successful. I think there's been some frustration that we haven't delivered as quickly as some would like, but we were trying to, as much as possible, to pull like projects together to get a better buy level of expenditure. We do believe that the second round will be smoother. I think we're a little more attuned to how it will work, and with that said, Bill is here to present the details of the actual projects completed and the status of those pending.
Thank you, Bob, and commissioners, Mayor Protem. I'll just walk you through some pictures and some information on each project, and if you do have some general questions you want to ask, feel free to ask as we go. In District 1, we have several different types of projects, some sidewalk renewal, park improvements, the Dunbar School historical marker, and some investment in the homes, condominium with backflow prevention and some other utility upgrades. Few particulars, Dunbar School historical site, Dunbar School is important to the community in the northeast, and we will actually have a marker and a pull-off on 7th Street. This is near the Peregrine Falcon subdivision, and as you can see, the marker is reminiscent of the original arch doorway on the school, and the neighborhood group has been working with us on the details of how that commemoration will look. We also were able to make a number of improvements in Parkwood, both benches, some stairs, the walking path, and this was coordinated by our Parks Department in coordination with several important members of the community there who had long advocated and worked towards seeing reinvestment made in Parkwood. And I think we actually do still have just a little bit of work that we have ongoing there. In District 2, the focus was very much on sidewalks, and we have two very significant concentrated area of sidewalks around 10th and Ivendale, and around Gilmore, 10th Street to Mill Street. Those projects are under contract, and we'll cut loose here as soon as the weather breaks and we get good construction going again, so this is an idea of the scope and the scale. This is just excerpts of the plans, so there's a lot more sidewalk than just what you see here. A lot of coordination involved in these sidewalk projects, utilities, we try to get with utilities to see if they've got repairs that they want to do so that they don't come back out and tear up the sidewalk as soon as we get done with it, so there is a lot of devil in the details getting these ready to go to bid. And then here again on 10th Street, and this is in the area of school that's been considered for safe routes to school, so we're able to kind of make early investments on that. And this is just an example, when you look at this, you think, oh, the big white spot, that must be the existing sidewalk. No, that is the street, it is the broken-up bricks behind it that is the sidewalk that we are in the process of replacing. In District 3 as well, sidewalks, important theme, we have two sidewalk projects, 22nd Street and in the Spring Valley area near 43rd and Rainbow, as well as work at Vega Park. In the case of 22nd Street, if you've, if you recall that hill, it's a fairly impassable block to a good connection between the community on top of the hill and the rest of Argentines, so we had this project complete. It was a fairly challenging hill to get up and down, and the work at Vega Park is also complete, and the work funded by CNET was just one piece of a broader set of efforts, some funded through private donations, some undertaken with the Parks Department, and I think that's a theme that we want to emphasize. What we saw many of the commissioners do was look for opportunities to leverage the CNET funds and go with other sources to make, you know, kind of a bang for the buck. And then coming in 2014 then will be sidewalk work in Spring Valley, and this was rather interesting because the community with the commissioner and others kind of created a little competition to see who could, which sub-area of this neighborhood could fundraise the most and use that as a way to help decide where the sidewalk replacements would begin. So I will say that I found it quite interesting as the commission undertook to see, you know, the variety of different ways that priorities were developed. It's probably a testament to the strength of the CNET program in that when you have a community that has so many needs as ours and so much diversity, is it kind of let staff get out of the way of a cumbersome project selection approach and let the commissioners use their networks and creativity and processes to really help bring things to life. It was quite interesting and encouraging to see that happen. In District 4, a very significant investment in recreation for our youth, we were able to turn a rather unused area into a combination football soccer field. In the spring, when the kids are out there playing football, this will be a much better picture, but the field is there and the field is ready and waiting. In District 5, again, recreation, this was another leveraged opportunity where our contribution was actually the minor contribution compared to some broader funds that the Piper School District was investing in the community center at 122nd and 11 Worth Road, the Patricia Diane Kane Community Center. And the outcome of our ability to leverage on that is multipurpose rooms, gymnasium, and really a high-quality community center. If we, as a unified government, were to just try to go out and say we're going to build a building and put a community center in, we wouldn't have been able to get this much impact as, by working through the partnerships. In District 6, the partnership theme continued with the Turner Recreation Commission, as well as some sidewalk work. In terms of the sidewalk work, we're finished on 55th Street. Now, when I say finished, we have some restoration and saw that when the sun starts shining again and the polar vortex goes back to where it belongs, we'll be able to get those greened up. And the Turner Community Walking Park, this is a case where the Turner Recreation Commission has broad plans, and they had a very specific item that the CNET funds could help with in terms of putting lighting there. The Rec Commission actually handled the entire project, we just wrote the check when we're done and made sure we were part of the process of getting them there, and that is all complete. And then, again, this fall, we have sidewalk work on 42nd Street and Shawnee Drive near Junction Elementary. District 7, we have sidewalk work on Teromee Avenue, 82nd to 84th, and this is just some before-and-after pictures that show you. The sidewalk there had almost dissolved in places. I don't know any other way to describe it, but that it was just in the process of disappearing on us. This is right at Stony Point North Elementary. This actual location had originally been proposed as a possible future safe routes to school project. It didn't get funded, but the legwork that had gone into it made it a good candidate for CNET. In District 8, we have both a drainage project and several park improvements. The drainage project, which is coming this spring, will help us address a longstanding issue. You can see that ditch in the top photo, what you don't see is what that's like when it rains, and it is both a safety concern in the roadway, as well as been a longstanding nuisance for the property owner in that area, property owners in that area. We also have baseball field improvements in Clam Park. Below is just a shortlist of the things we were able to do. We painted the bleachers, addressed the lead paint issue there, ADA ramps added, new roof on the bleachers, fresh saw, dirt in the infield irrigation, safety fencing around the dugout, so really bringing that recreation asset back to us. And then in Welborn Park, pavement overlay of the trail there. The at-large districts, and we didn't make the stars bigger because they're at-large, we zoomed in closer, but you can consider those the at-large stars for the at-large districts. We had basically several projects for at-large, one, then Commissioner Holland designated for park improvements citywide for playgrounds, and two of them are complete at City Park North and Rosedale, and the remaining sites are actually under a process of soliciting and leveraging private donations to match the CNET contribution, so there's going to be additional playgrounds installed this coming year. And then for at-large District 2, addressing another item that actually I had handed to me by Bob about the first month I was on the job, said someday it's your job to figure this one out, and with CNET, we actually have a chance to do that. It's pedestrian crossing into Rosedale Park, Mission Road, and then sidewalks along the east side of Mission Road, not all the way down the hill, but to connect to the housing to the north and then connect backwards to 43rd Street. So that's a short recap of the projects. Where we are looking forward, 2015 is just around the corner, and one of the things we learned is it does take a while to get these projects queued up, so we want to get an earlier start this year. I would say tonight is the call for projects, and we are available to work with each of you on kind of how to get your arms around it. Several of you haven't had the opportunity to do this before, but by March 31st, we would ask for your initial list. You don't have to do all the legwork and estimating, but we would like you to have a pretty good feel for what you would like to do and the priority order so that we can tackle it ourselves and see what we have, and I think you, I think we all have a better feel for what each commissioner share buys you now, so we'll be able to do some good rules of thumb. We need to do some eligibility review and legwork, but we're targeting by July 1st to hopefully be really finalizing those lists and maybe even be able to get started detailed design on several of the batches that can run early. And again, both Bob and myself are available to start setting up meetings and visiting with you if you would like on how to get going on 2015. With that, I would stand for any questions. I would, I would like to do one thing.
Mr. Markley?
I don't know that this is a question for Bill, I think it's really probably a question for us, is with that second at-large pot of money, is it just going to sit there, or is there some sort of plan for how we handle that? Maybe that's something we discussed during budget time, but I just got to throw it out there. Obviously, we're short one at-large commissioner, so...
Well, I personally don't have an answer. I think we could all just divide it out. Because unless, unless there's a change, that person will not be on until April of 15, and if this program continues, that person will get their turn then, later. I don't have an answer for you tonight. That one solution is to divide it out. Okay? Commissioner Kane?
I just want to thank staff on what they did for that community center, because it's working with the school districts and refurbishing, reusing another building, saved a boatload of money, and it wasn't easy, and Doug worked extremely hard on that, and so did Bill, and so did Bob Roddy, and it looks fantastic. I just wish there were other things that we could reach out when we're talking to the school districts. Does somebody have a building and not use it? Maybe we could repurpose the building, you know, because we didn't have a community center out there, and now that we do, and I appreciate the work that you did, and I also appreciate the work that fellow commissioners did as well.
Thank you. Mr. Murgia?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I don't see any reason to delay doing what you suggested or offering that up for a vote for the commission. I personally don't want to be called to a special session to come to City Hall again to discuss for an hour what we're going to do with the extra at-large money, so it appears that people have consensus on that, but I could be wrong, and I surely don't want to break policy, so hopefully we have a lawyer here who can tell us if we can make a motion to just divide that money by district so that Public Works is not delayed or slowed down and they can just keep on moving.
Okay.
Is there any violation in making a motion to distribute that at-large money equally?
Is it, it works, I think. If this one does.
Thanks to Tim. Hello. Mine's, is mine working?
Yeah.
I don't think there's any legal reason that you can't make the motion, but I don't know how much is left, or... I don't, that's not my question. It doesn't matter how much is left. The point is, we all know that we were given an amount of money to spend, and at the end of the day, something has to be done with that at-large money, so if there's no legal reason to not move forward, I would make a motion that we divide the money equally by district.
We have a motion in the second. Mr. Bach had a comment before the second, I'm going to allow his comment, then it'll be commissioners' discussion only.
You know, I think it's for the commission typically, and I think it's a little different since we're down here in the chambers, typically this governing body doesn't take action on items that aren't, that are in a special session format. We will take them up, go through them, set out, say that's the direction we want to go, and then they're brought back as a formal action item, you know, put on the agenda for the full commission meeting for a decision, and that's been the process you've always followed, so as Judy said, I don't know if there's a legal reason, but that really is the process we've always used for the agenda format of approving items.
First, we have Commissioner Townsend, or Commissioner Maddox, then Commissioner Townsend, then Commissioner Kane.
Thank you. The question that I have...
He goes first, then you.
I am so sorry. I heard my name first, so I'm sorry.
It's probably my fault.
Well, thank you. I just had a question about Clam Park. I seen that it was a District 8, it says District 8, but Clam Park is not District 8, but, but then also, I was, I was told that Clam Park would be refurbished with turf funds from the T-bones, but it has the 8th District on here, so I just wanted a little clarification on that. And then before your answer, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the CNET project giving commissioners an opportunity to take projects and things that they see needed for their districts to make them happen, so I want to say that and put that on the record.
Yes, Commissioner Clam Park was funded by a variety of sources. I believe there was turf funds, there was CDBG money, and then some CNET money that Commissioner Ellison dedicated because we had a shortfall, and he generously contributed some of his money to a park outside his area.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you. With regard to divvying up the money, I guess the question I have, would it not be more equitable to divvy it up to those districts that would be covered by District 1 at large instead of all of them? Large instead of all of them?
Well, I, I, I think that it...
Asking.
Well, I think it again needs to be pointed out, just for the public record, that you're nominated from a district. I have four sub-districts, but I'm elected at-large, so arguably, the at-large commissioners are free to use their CNEP money anywhere within the city limits. Now, what's more equitable or not, I guess depends on which side of State Avenue you're on.
Well, that, that's a reasonable explanation.
I, I don't, I don't have an answer for that either.
No, that, that makes sense.
And I don't know if the Second District at Large that would have been in the seat where they would have spent the money. I, I know that Commissioner Ellison spent some of his money not outside of the district. In fact, in Clam Park. It was, so you're not obligated to spend it within your district. That's not one of the rules. It's where a need exists, so. Commissioner Kane?
Well, I think I'd second Gail's motion. And I like your idea. I think tonight would be rushing it, you know, I think that's something we need to talk about. It's going to happen anyway. And the mayor's not here, you know, and if I had my way, we'd go ahead and fill the seat. So I don't want to jump to guns tonight.
Commissioner Philbrook?
A third to Townsend and Kane. And yeah, I would like to think about that because, no, I agree. I really like the fact that, that the commissioner before me gave money to Clam Park because they fell short on their, on their funds. And we're still figuring out where to spend the money that, that has been allocated to Parks and Rec through, through his commission seat. And so we're working on that now. But I would sure hate to miss out on some CNEP money that's sorely needed, you know, just as much on the north side as it is on the south, so thank you.
Well, as, as an at-large commissioner, I will, I will say that I may well have individual projects, but I'm also going to look to districts where the money that I have allocated can go to either further the project beyond what we're able to do or make it a bigger project and get more bang for the buck, or especially where if we can use some of that money to leverage additional funding. You know, for me, it's all one town, and an improvement anywhere is a benefit. So at this point, I don't have a, I'm sorry to say, a laundry list, although I can think of many places that need sidewalks, but whether those are priorities or not, I don't know. We have a motion in a second, and unless they withdraw a motion in a second, I guess I'll call for a vote. I, I also am going to concur in the idea that we wait. So Commissioner McCarron?
Well, I'll withdraw my second. I mean, based on what Mr. Bach said, that really the typical way for our process is that we bring items to a full commission meeting. We don't take action in a special session. I, so I have absolutely no problem with that. It can come back at that time.
I would add to that simply, I, we'd, I hope that the mayor's staff and administration would urge the mayor to bring this before us quickly because to some extent, I get the sense from the conversation that you would, you want to be the first in the morning to put your projects in with Public Works, and knowing how much money you're going to have to spend may be a determinant in that. Waiting a month or two is not acceptable. Commissioner Walters?
If Brian has withdrawn his second, I'll second the motion. I don't think this is rocket science. I don't think we need to think about it for months before we decide. Thank you.
Kate, Commissioner Murgia?
Listen, it's not that big of a deal. I would just say, we all are elected officials up here. We are totally capable of making a minor decision like this without a gigantic formal process. We are capable of taking action when our mayor is out of town on an item as simple as this. And as far as, you know, the position, the at-large position, that, the concern, Gail, I hear your concern, and you're new and you wouldn't know this, but I'll just clarify. I didn't realize this. Commissioner Holland, when he was at the at-large position, he spent money in my district, in Rosedale Park, which is not the north side of town, it's south side. So just to let you know, so he did make that choice. I really appreciate that, which I didn't know. So I'm just saying, you guys, I, I think this is a very progressive commission, and it's not a big deal. Nobody's, nobody's missing out. We're dividing it equally, and frankly, I think we have a lot of stuff to work on, and this would not be one of them that we would need to spend a lot of time in. So I'll, I'll keep my motion, and we'll let the votes fly where they may.
Commissioner Townsend?
Could I ask just generally, how much money are we talking about?
It's $210,000 for each commissioner, plus the at-large, so it's 210,000 for the empty at-large position approximately. District Seven gets a smaller portion because this is funded by KCK, and so it's prorated what portion of KCK is in District Seven.
So we're talking somewhere 22, 23,000 extra dollars.
I'll rely on your math, Mayor Protam. It's 20 to 30,000 dollars.
As close as I can do it in my head.
10,000, 10,000, who cares?
Well, the only concern I have is the dividing up is good, is just giving some more thought to how to do the vision. I understand that it could be done, the at-large could do it anyway, but, you know, I just would like a little bit more time to think about it, that's all.
Well, we have a motion in a second, and there are no other buttons appearing with the motion, motion in second. Call roll.
Roll call. Townsend?
Uh, no.
McCarron?
Aye.
Murgia?
Aye.
Maddox?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Philbrook?
No.
Walker? The motion fails. By the four.
Failed by?
By the four.
Right. All right. We're good. And that's without prejudice to bringing it back. Perhaps whatever presentation staff or someone. All right. Are there any other questions for these gentlemen on the CNEP projects?
Mr. Mayor Protam, if you'd permit me, there are a number of folks, staff and other organizations that did work on this. I want to acknowledge Margie Witt, who retired, and Jack Webb, who continues on in Parks, did an awful lot of work on the ones that you see. We also brought Fred back us out of retirement in his consulting capacity to lend a steady hand to getting the sidewalk and trails through. And Steve Roeth with Benish Associates has been our project manager. And we also grabbed our latest addition to Public Works staff in Brandon Grover, who's here. And if they, they could raise their hand, Brandon's job was to figure out how to find pictures of 22 projects that we hadn't bothered to keep assembled, so a team effort.
Well, good. Good job. I think we'll have Fred forever. By the way, I'm glad we will. Your knowledge of what has gone on the last 35 years is invaluable. Well, that being said, I think we now need to adjourn to executive session.
We need a...
Do you have a motion?
Motion for executive session.
It's the acquisition of property.
And how long?
Thirty minutes.
I make a motion to go into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss property acquisition.
Second.
Then we will, we will, we will not be taking any binding action in the executive session, and then we recess between the end of the executive session and the seven o'clock meeting. Okay. Call the roll, please. All in favor? Any opposed?